Alright, welcome everybody to another addition of what are we Citizens United with myself and you. So Jerry's here, Robyn's here.
Hello everybody.
Gail's on the mend right now.
We use this. But she had surgery.
She has some surgery.
My.
It was a foot surgery that she had years ago when it came apart. She has pins and that stuff. So they had to redo.
So she's hurting right now.
Oh yeah.
Yeah. Well, of course.
But she'll be alright. She's tough.
Alright, we got Bill here and Chris and a bunch of other people. Hello guys. Stars, real quick.
Yes.
Send us stars. Ninety-nine cents gives us a hundred stars. If we accumulate enough stars, that'll give us an opportunity for some other advertising through Facebook. Um, once we make enough on the stars, we are obviously getting ready to do something here in Niagara County. Yeah, gonna try to do our own catch project.
Yep.
And then of course it also will help Falls County anywhere, Falls County anywhere and Spitball and Sports.
And before anybody thinks anything, it's not like it's a twin of monies where you think you're gonna sue.
Oh yeah.
You're gonna get money from it though.
Yeah.
A ton of money. Yeah.
Now you can have all thirty-two dollars.
Yeah. Um, so we have a guest today and let me bring up her thing first real quick. She's got her own pop friend of the show.
Yeah.
Stacy, I'm gonna say it right, Son Ladder. Son Ladder, Stacy Son Ladder. Look, there's her show. It's called How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York Edition. And it's Tuesdays at four-thirty Eastern, one-thirty Pacific time. Let's bring her in. I wanna talk about it with her and get everyone to know where it is and how to watch it. Hey Stacy.
Hi guys.
Hey. Good. How are you?
Good. Thanks for having me on.
Thanks for coming on.
I, uh, I had a special errand today to go pick up my dog. Koda says hi.
Oh, hi.
Say hi, Koa.
Oh my God, how cute. So furry.
We gotta have a dog. We'll have one running around here soon. Will jump us. Alright, so Stacy, you're a good friend of ours and stuff. And then I saw you're doing a podcast and it's a really good one. It's called.
Something native.
Yeah, How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York State Edition pretty much. Tell me more about it. What's going on?
So, uh, I was hired by a law firm out of California. Uh, their specialty is fighting CPS. And, uh, I do the New York State Edition of exposing corruption within CPS for our state.
Oh nice. How good. How needed. I mean, and you've been fighting for, God, so many, how?
Long time.
Decades at this point?
It, it, yeah, it has been decades and in fact tomorrow's show possibly is going to be with Vincent Davis himself, the attorney from California, interviewing me on my own case.
That'll be interesting. Yeah.
Yeah.
It starts at what time? Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty. Yeah. It's, it's hard. This is, um, the recent turn of events is really hard. But the public needs to know what's happening with our tax dollars.
Yeah.
And it's not to make families better.
No.
They did not make my, they did not make my family better.
And I don't know of one that has.
I don't know. I haven't heard of a case that has been better from CPS.
Yeah. And New York is bad, right? You were talking off air, New York's the worst.
New York is really bad and what you find is the states that are the worst are the ones that border other countries. Or, you know, so New York State borders Canada, Texas is notorious, California is notorious. And Florida doesn't necessarily border another country, but it's close enough and Florida is also notorious for problems with CPS and trafficking kids through CPS. And, and like we caught Mr. D'Angelo sex trafficking kids under color of law through CPS. Um, because the one victim of his, you know, didn't get his chance to come out in court and trial. But the one victim, the sixteen-year-old is allegedly a DSS victim of his that he was sex trafficking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had the nerve to call her an underage prostitute.
And then you know, like when there's one, there's more. You know what I mean?
Well, that's always, that's always my line that I go back to, right? If you hired Pablo Escobar to drive Brink's trucks, would he stop at one dollar? You know, and pedophiles are very prolific, you know, prolific. So, um, they're not gonna stop at one child.
Right. There's gotta be so many more out there.
Now, you have, you're, it's New York Edition, but you could, you, this is with, what kind, there's other like state additions, right? I could see like if I'm in whatever state, California, wherever I'd be.
Yeah, they're starting, that's, that's their goal is to have, um, additions for each state. But I think that they started with New York because New York was, is, is among the most notorious. And, um, and the, the cases that come from New York are so outrageous that they wanted somebody else to talk about it instead of them on their show. Um, cause I know that Ms. G, she always says, "Don't say anything, York. I can't handle it." So, um, you know, the, the few that I've done already, they're, they're horrific.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's a few that we get sent our way.
Yeah.
How about the people you know? I mean, you know, people that are in the mix.
So many.
Yeah.
I mean, like, like I said, like every single day, somebody is posting something, somebody new is posting something about CPS and what has happened to them and how dirty they are. And it's, it's disgusting. It really is. I don't, you don't think of CPS as like good people.
Well, how does it start? Let me ask you, this is gonna be a dumb question, but I'm gonna see.
There's no dumb questions, cause I, I know where you're, maybe where you're headed and they're good questions.
Okay, my, my question is, how does it begin? Like, how does it begin? Like, do they, they try to find vulnerable people or like, you know what I mean? What makes them decide on who's gonna be the one that they do this to? Do you know what? I, I don't know. Cause it can't be everyone, but it's a lot. So how do they decide who?
If you think of CPS more like a corporation or a business, then it makes it easier to predict what they're going to do or understand what they're up to. You know, I tell people, first of all, it doesn't matter if you're black, white, green, purple. Doesn't matter if you're Muslim, Catholic, Jewish. Doesn't matter what ethnicity you are, what background you have. If you wanna know what's gonna happen in the world, you follow the money. And if you wanna know what's gonna happen within CPS, you follow the money. And again, if you think of CPS like a corporation, then you can understand what they're up to. They are out there to maximize income for the state. So just like when you're doing a job and your performance is evaluated, they look at you, not at, you know, the customer service you gave. Or at the end of the day, they look at the revenue you've brought in. Once you understand that fact, you understand our judiciary, you understand our police force, you understand CPS. Because at the end of the day, their employer is ultimately the state. Even if they work for the counties, still at some level, the state is involved. And they're all looking to increase revenue for the state. Because they wanna be viewed in a certain way for their job performance. If you look at the CPS caseworkers and who's hired and so forth, they tend to look for people that know that they couldn't get a job with such benefits and income anywhere else. And so they're happy to do what they have to do to please their employer. For instance, um, I know of a case where the person working for CPS, her background was working for Walmart. And if you look at a lot of the Erie County CPS caseworkers, they're not even licensed social workers because that degree, making them licensed social workers actually makes them vulnerable because they have a license or something you can go after. So they don't even have many credentialed social workers.
Wow, geez.
Oh, basically like they could just pick anybody.
Anybody, yeah. Anybody can do it.
They do. They do. And they manufacture false allegations all the time to kidnap kids from good families.
And they could, now I'm gonna ask you, when they kidn, they take the kids and generally, what do they, what? They'll give them to the, they, they always end up giving them to the abusive part. Obviously, they give it to the abusive side. Are they ever just taken right out of the country or anything like that or?
So, um, that's the thing, right? Um, can I show you kids that were taken out of the country? No, but you can bet your bottom dollar that is what happens. It's all with trafficking children. Because what does the public know once a child enters the foster system? Because everything is covered with the cloak of confidentiality. So people don't know where our kids are going. And if you really pay attention, there are hundreds of thousands of missing children.
Yeah.
Yeah. And our own country, our own country, our own government produced a report in June of two thousand nineteen by the US Department of State. And it's a report on human trafficking. You can Google it, look it up. And it's about human trafficking throughout the world. And what the report says for the United States, like India, they traffic their kids this way or that way. In the United States, it says, "Most children who are sex trafficked have been through the foster care system."
Yeah.
So this is how, when people tell you that human trafficking, child sex trafficking is a bigger industry than illicit drugs. This is where it's at and this is where they're talking about. Because this is how it happens behind closed doors, where people don't see it and understand it's going on.
No, because I, well, first off, we're with Stacy Son Ladder, who is doing a podcast called How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York State Edition. Every, every Tuesday at four-thirty Eastern. Did you have something you were looking at me?
No. All those people who are, I used to see hundreds of people on my Facebook with hashtag save our children. All those people who did that hashtag save our children, you're gonna wanna watch Stacy's podcast. You're gonna wanna get involved.
Definitely. Go ahead Stacy.
Yeah. So when you say that they tend to give children to the abuser, again, if you were a large corporation and you want a job security, what do you do? You procure more business and more job security by making more, uh, abusers, victims, children that are, you know, you harm them, you damage them, and then that's more job security. For the industry.
It makes sense too, though. Yeah.
And think about, think about how much money I probably have poured in the system alone, trying to protect my kids. And they realize that the state makes more money by giving custody to the abuser because the safe parent will fight.
Yeah. Wow, that's so sick. It's so perfectly set up.
Yeah, yeah. It's all per, it's, nothing's an accident.
Yeah. They know people are gonna fight for their children.
There's no mistakes.
Right.
Everything is, everything's on purpose. It's, oh my goodness. And you know what else Stacy? It's you who, that I met first that kicked this all off. Because I, we were just talking about it.
For you, I wouldn't have.
We didn't realize this is going on ever. Like, it's now we know.
I didn't even realize that like what, I'm a victim of Nick Daniels and I didn't even realize that what he did to that young girl was sex trafficking until you explained it to me. And then I was like, holy shit, like how did I not know that? How did I not put that through my head?
So this, you know, this background sort of, you know, hits the ball home, right? Because, um, you witnessed firsthand Nick D'Angelo in his profession, who was hired knowing he's a sex offender. And it was public information at the time he was hired. So by no mistake, right? You said no coincidences.
Right.
By design, he was hired knowing he's a sex offender, knowing what he would do for the agency. And then you have my story with my ex being a CPS attorney for Niagara County as well, who Nick D'Angelo also appeared on my case in court and helped cover up my ex. And then maybe you saw my interview with Tiffany Hughes and she exposed the dirty deeds of my ex, the dirty deeds of Nick D'Angelo, and a third attorney for Niagara County CPS, who is cherry picking children to bring to her lesbian lover, who ended up also being a pedophile.
I just talked to somebody who said that she hired this lawyer and on this girl, and she said that this, this lawyer took on a lot of Nick D'Angelo's cases. And she said that this lawyer said that she's appalled by what he has done. Like she was going through all the cases that he had and she is like appalled at everything that he's done.
Well, I know many of his cases. I'm sure you know many of his cases. And indeed, because what you see on the cases that Nick D'Angelo was involved in is the behind the scenes influence, then causing children to go to the alleged sex abusers and so forth.
Oh my God, it's so many, so many that were.
Which was why I was bothered about, um, Nick's charges and him being allowed to practice in being involved with custody cases. With this background.
And you notice he, he specialized in non-biological parent rights. Like that's something he's special. I know, I know a girl who, he has fifty percent custody of her child. Nick D'Angelo has fifty percent custody of this girl's child. It's not even his child. It's his non-biological child, but he has fifty percent custody of it. The girl just got her rights taken right from her and her, has to give her child to him.
So I can tell you two local cases, okay? Three, that I, just as one person have an awareness of, okay? And each time they were trying to send a child to a non-biological stranger parent. Well, call them a parent, make them a parent, but they're not the parent. And you understand the effect of that in terms of, once you establish that you can send children to strangers, you can traffic them anywhere.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So of course Nick D'Angelo is a proponent of sending children to non-biological parents. He's one case I know of. The other case is one I did an interview on with Shari Schiller. And a pedophile used an opportunity of a woman's death to go and snatch her kids who were his victims previously. These children were still in counseling from his sexual abuse. And upon the mother's passing, he took the kids and the biological father says, "Hey, I'm coming to get them." And he said, "No, you're not." And that pedophile petitioned in cust, in court to get custody of these kids.
Ah.
And that judge just gave the father permission to make phone calls on certain days a week for fifteen minutes or so. Like it should have been an automatic dad's coming, dad's a natural parent, natural rights, kid to dad. No. The judge, once we got involved as court watchers, the judge gave the father temporary custody. And was still trying to push the pedophile and have involvement with the kids. And that ultimately, it took a lot of work. And, um, what was the third case? The third case was one of my friends. He's a, um, he's a nurse practitioner. Um, proved ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine-nine-nine percent. He's the father. And the judge was still trying to give the, the paternity to a stranger, the girl's boyfriend.
These judges need to be held accountable big time.
So, but, but nothing is by mistake. This is so that they can traffic children.
Wow. Yeah. And you know, so now like, uh, the Niagara County, like just I'll keep it here. The Niagara County Legislature are the ones who hired D'Angelo, right? They're the ones that, that make that happen. How much does the up, like, I bet you they do know, but like people who are the, um, like the, uh, social services director or whoever they are, they, they know what's happening too, right? I mean, they, they're not, they can't be like, pretend like they don't know is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I think in my case, I'm pretty public with information. I, I redact my kids' names. Um, so, but I put the, I put the, I put the, you know, the, the Niagara County CPS records up on my Facebook page and you can read my kids' disclosures to CPS that their father, you know, strangulated my daughter. And my son saw it happen. They told CPS when, where, why it happened. My daughter was running away from the father. My kids both disclosed sex abuse by their father. Um, Niagara County CPS refused to send my children to the Child Advocacy Center for a, um, forensic interview. Um, you know, the father left my daughter on Thanksgiving in a car when she ran away. Two days before, she was eight years old. Um, it was snowing outside and he left her in the car. The whole time their family had Thanksgiving dinner at Danny Shan's, which has no open windows to look over the parking lot. Niagara County CPS unfounded all of this on their own former employee. Don't tell me they don't know.
Right, right.
Yeah, they know. Yeah, they know. And nothing's an accident. And it is, I don't know. Would you ask Jerry, is it systematic, right?
Sounds like it's approaching it anyway.
It, it has to have been built in this for a long time. I mean, I don't, I don't know, right? I mean, I, this had, it just didn't start ten years ago.
Right. I, I forget, I forget my friend's saying, it's something like, one time is a one-off, two times is, I forget what two times is. And third time, three times is a pattern.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have three Niagara County CPS attorneys who, um, we can essentially establish that they were trafficking children.
Yeah. You're right. And Chris says too much crazy sick shit. Yeah, it is crazy sick shit. But the whole thing, this is, and no, and this is why you're doing such a big job, what you're doing, because a lot of us don't know.
Right.
There's so many that don't have a clue. Cause if you never had a dealing with CPS, you might never understand, you know, you don't get it. Right.
Bill May wants to know, who is the director of CPS in Niagara County?
Well, it used to be Burt Marshall. Now it's, um, it's a female. Uh, Megan, I wanna say her name is, uh, Love? I forget her, um, I forget her name. And then, um, David Haylett is the Niagara County CPS attorney, the senior, you know, attorney. Um, there's many, um, Niagara County CPS part-time social services attorney, one to include Patrick Balkan.
Of course.
Of course. And Patrick Balkan so far has not even been held accountable for him being caught covering up the rape that happened in his office by lying to the state police. Nothing even happened with him with that. Nothing.
Bill's.
Yes, Megan Lutz, yep.
Wow. Well, well, yeah, no, no one's been held accountable. That stuff, they, they, they don't even hold accountable the, the rapist himself. Um, alright, so Stacy.
Remember, you remember, um, Dersberger, I think his name was, he was the Erie County CPS director and he got in trouble for sexual assault of some of the caseworkers.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, it's, this is unbelievable. You guys gotta watch this. And that's on Thursdays at four-thirty. We share it on Tuesdays, Tuesdays, I'm sorry, Tuesdays at four-thirty. We're gonna share, we share it on Citizens United. Cause you sent me that message so we can always share it. Everyone's gotta watch this. How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York Edition. Because this is the most important thing going on.
A lot of people need help right now with CPS.
Yes.
I always, anytime I see somebody who has an issue going on with CPS or is going through something, I always refer them to Stacy. I, she's the first person I tell them to go.
Absolutely. That's what I think too. Immediately is Stacy, cause she's the expert that we, you don't usually get this.
Yeah.
Like we get with her. Bill says horrible. You and Katie have similar stories. Hope we can work together on this, getting the news out. I am doing a speaking engagement, NIFCA, July twenty-second. Cool. Bill coming.
Yeah. So, and, and the other thing too, is not just exposing the CPS stories, but again, I started also the initiative, uh, for court watching.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's super, super important. And I gotta tell you, I have personally saved kids from pedophiles by doing court watching.
Yes.
It's very, it's very effective. And it restores the power of the courts to the people.
Yes.
And because the more transparency and the more involvement the public has and participates in our courts, the more it restores the power to the people.
You know, I had always told you, and I believe this, you probably have done, I know you have, done more for Niagara County than any sheriff ever. You have. No, you have. You just have. Stacy, you're the same. There, there is no one doing this. This is unbelievable because no one, this is mind blowing, cause you don't even get it.
Like, oh my God, horrible, but they don't wanna do anything or.
Yeah, this is.
Be involved.
This is one of the most important. Go ahead Jerry.
Just thinking of a compliment. Should this information be in our schools with the, I mean, really, shouldn't there be like something where teachers and principals and Mark, the superintendent, something, maybe a seminar or something that gets to teach them? Cause I'm sure a lot of them, like a lot of people, they're not paying attention.
So I, I have this to say. There are good teachers and there are bad teachers. At the end of the day, who do they work for?
Yeah.
The state.
Right.
Okay. And this again is big business for the state. So many are, even the good ones are chicken to really say something. Um, and I've had some interactions with the Department of Education when I have exposed, um, certain people with their professional license who, uh, mishandled cases involving children. And, um, the thing, the crimes that these people did were crimes illegal. And the Department of Education said, "No, that that was okay what they did." So they aided, you know, they, they condone what these behaviors like, what CPS is doing. But if a good teacher is listening, what I do tell people to do, and I instill, who do the police work for? They also work for the state. But if you can get as many layers of involvement as possible, it makes corruption a little bit more difficult. So if, you know, if a teacher witnesses neglect, like a child doesn't have a warm sweater and it's the middle of winter, that's one thing. But if a teacher witnesses any sort of child abuse that is an actual legit crime, a teacher should report it not just to CPS, but also the police. Cause I can tell you in my case, that's how they got away with a lot of their dirty. Because when my kids disclosed sex abuse, Niagara County CPS refused to take the kids to a forensic evaluation that would involve the police. And Niagara County CPS got a handwritten testimony by my daughter that her father pinches her privates. And Niagara County CPS did not report that to the police. Had they reported that to the police, maybe something would have happened.
Right.
So when a teacher witnesses a crime, a teacher shouldn't just report to CPS. A teacher should also report to the police and not assume CPS is going to do their job and report to the police like they should.
You know what happens, I think, sometimes Stacy? And I know, cause I, I taught for thirty-four years. Um, when we noticed something, we'd hit the school counselor immediately. And we'd start tracking that, you know, making sure that she would bring the child in and they would get to talk. Sometimes the child would wanna talk. Some other times they didn't. But then they would start, and we caught a number of girls, young girls that were being raped. And, but we, just by, you know, your hunch, by the way they appeared, by the way they acted. So there is, you know, there are teachers out there, we're, they were watching how much happens after we're done with them. I really don't know.
Right. And that's the thing, like in my case, exactly that, those who did report, ultimately, nothing happened. But again, I just think if it's an actual crime, report to both because it makes corruption a little bit harder.
Right.
Because you might find that needle in the haystack that cares in the process and then they can't get away with their dirty.
That's a good point. I mean, cause first of all, putting light on the cockroach as they run, we know all that. But then just, you're just hoping you find that one needle in a haystack that gives a damn. Because so many people couldn't care less about sex crimes. We say this all the time, right? They don't care about them if it's against children or against adults. They just don't care.
Like Stacy, they get, they get chicken, they get chicken shit, eggs. They're worried about.
They gotta have some.
Whatever. Yeah. You gotta stand up, have a span.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm proof that standing up is okay.
Yeah.
Yes, you're.
Absolutely.
Yes, you are.
Alright Stacy.
And so is Noel and so are you, John, you know.
Oh, I'm just a vehicle. I'll tell you, you guys are unbelievable between you and Robin and well, I don't even know what to say. I'm just here talking. You guys are something else, man. I, you deserve to have statues built, whatever they do now with everybody around here, especially in Niagara Falls. They love to build statues. Statues, what was it? Wellenda? Yeah, he's got one coming. Alright, why don't we let Stacy go? Cause I kept her longer than I promised. Stacy Son Ladder, friend of our show and we're a friend of hers, of course. How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York Edition, every Tuesday, four-thirty Eastern. Find it definitely on Citizens United page. Is there a different page they, if, like, your page of course, probably, right? Your Facebook page.
Yeah. But you guys are good at sharing. So might as well have people come to your page, you know? You have a lot of great followers. You know, I've met some of them, good, good people, people who care.
Yeah. And we're gonna get this, this is, Stacy, you're the best and thank you for being with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for having me on.
And anytime, of course, but we're gonna ask you back on, but if you ever feel like coming on, just tell us.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright Stacy.
Thank you for waiting.
Bye-bye. Alright, that's Stacy Son Ladder. What an incredible person.
Yeah. She showed up to Nick D'Angelo's court date too. She was right there. She was watching. She was doing her court watching right there.
Yes, Scott.
She even caught a few things that I didn't catch, you know?
Scott said something funny here. Wonder if the kids had added school reports to the guidance counselor and she calls her son.
Yeah.
Allegedly that might happen.
Yeah.
It could.
Um, why don't one for you then? Got one for you.
God. You wouldn't, there's someone saying that, whether it's her, there's someone around. You wouldn't. There's someone saying that, whether it's her, there's someone around that's probably making.
Who's to say that's not occurring, especially with the population? I mean, there's kids.
It's occurring.
Yeah, and from poor communities, especially, I would say.
Why don't we, why don't we take our break? It's halfway home. We got to come back. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about some city politics. Because we have no choice. I think it's a, I think it's a month until the election. I think we're getting close. About a minute and a half, we'll be right back.
Digits nine eight eight can save a life. If you or someone you know is having thoughts of suicide or experiencing a mental health or substance use crisis, nine eight eight provides connection to free confidential support. There is hope. The lifeline works. For twenty-four seven confidential support, just call, text, or chat nine eight eight.
They're good, everything and. They're good. There's good people. It's just. It's just that we've talked about this so much, the whole sex crime thing, whether it's against a child or an adult, no one really thinks it could commit a crime.
But who would he even truly?
Is the one.
People that are in charge of protecting a child.
Yeah, not all. Yeah, no, I'm sure it's not.
But it's just a system. Systematics gotta be the word. This is the setup for decades.
It seems to me though, that predators gravitate towards positions like that where you're gonna have. Access to kids.
Yeah.
Especially troubled kids. So you know CPS workers. Those are gonna be people that are potential predators.
And you don't even have to be a uh anything. You don't have to be a social worker.
Right, yeah.
You can run the department and not be a social worker.
That's great.
Well, think of, we know somebody who didn't know have anything and he was in charge of the social services.
Right.
He he he's nothing, not a social worker, nothing. Um, alright. Yeah, well, alright, on to stuff that's going on in in Niagara Falls. Um, we have city council elections coming up. Mayor, we know too, but city council's coming. And um, the other day, city council did something that was really disgusting. Think of this. There was an opportunity for the city of Niagara Falls to upgrade all of its lighting, like on the street. Well, um, and it was, I think it comes from COVID money. It was grant money, that type of stuff. David Zajak, Vincent Colley, and Dante Miles didn't show up, so it doesn't happen.
But.
Uh, one guy set out a protest. I don't know why. The other two, Zajak was on vacation and no one knows what Miles was doing. They just said they didn't show up.
Should be fired. I mean, he should be ousted. Because the citizens, I mean, holy macro, light is important.
Yes.
It's extremely important.
To deter crime?
And it's just, that's it.
Why is it, why do you?
Why bother?
Become a city councilman to not show up for important shit?
Yeah. He is for now. It ends here shortly.
Was there then?
Tracy Vax was there and uh. Tompkins would have been better. So um, anyhow, so there's that happened. So now we got city council elections and I think there's for two seats. Tompkins is out. And Colley, Vincent Colley, the one who didn't show up, he's also up this time. He was just put in there. He was never elected.
He was just put in for spam.
For spam power. They just placed.
I gotta ask you this out of anger, if it's that important, like lighting.
Hmm.
Why isn't the mayor in the upper echelon involved in that?
They are. They were.
And they couldn't do anything.
The mayor call, according to the mayor in the paper, they called these people making sure they were gonna be there. And uh, Zajak said he wasn't, he's on vacation. Miles, I guess, never answered the call and Colley said he was gonna be there.
Well, they should be part of it. They should be ousted. I mean, you'll see later.
Yeah, and you need those holes.
They hurt the city.
Yeah.
They hurt the city. That's a very important thing for me anyway. You need light.
Yeah.
Darkest thing, they just lurking that stuff.
So we got that coming. So we got our election. So Tompkins out, Colley's seat is up, or you know, he's gotta run. So you have um, a bunch of. Next week, we're gonna have Uniqlo Lewis on our show to talk about why she's running. Yeah, we'll talk to her about why she's running for city council. Um, Brian Archie, James Abandanza. Uh, gee, who the hell else is this? Jim Perry, he's he's running. What a what a shame. What a shame.
What a disappointment he is.
That's so, that's so upsetting. He was, he was the whistleblower and did a great job over at the waterboard. He ran last time on his own.
That was the same person who ran before.
On his own because he knows how corrupt they are, but now he just fell right in and became a.
He was the only one that showed up for our debate.
Yeah, when all that nonsense.
When all that nonsense went on.
Yeah.
Jim Perry was the one that showed up and.
And now he's just a part of the.
Now he just decided it's not worth it.
Yeah, let's see if I can become a councilman. What a shame. What an absolute shame.
I don't know how you sell out like that.
Yeah, that's disgusting. I mean, it's really.
That's worse than the people who genuinely believe it, to know that he knows that they're fucked up and he's gonna go with them anyways.
Yeah.
Just to win, that that makes me sick.
Yeah, that's that's disgusting. Yeah. Um, so Vincent Colley's gotta run. And then this guy, this is here, is the face of Niagara Falls. This is the absolute face of everything that we have. This guy here is what it is. Michael Gowl is running again. So now, this guy, here he has a good picture of him and uh, Bill Carroll. Uh, who is the Niagara, we'll get into him too, the Niagara Falls Republican chairman, Bill Carroll, right there. And there and there's Gowl on the other side. Michael Gowl, let's let's go down his list of of this is achievement. He was a, he was a sitting council member in nineteen ninety-three while he had to plead guilty to filing fraudulent tax returns for a guy named Paul Kozowski. To hide his illegal gambling profits. He was sentenced seventeen months in prison. He ended up doing ten months. So okay, after that, nineteen ninety-four, while awaiting, well, no, this is. While he's awaiting trial, he is charged with D W Y and leaving the scene of an accident. Um, also, at that point, the FBI arrested him for witness intimidation. So that happens. Still only has ten months though. Nineteen ninety-seven, he's arrested for harassment, obstruction, endangering the welfare of a child. Following a domestic violence incident at his home. A month later after that, he's arrested for D W Y again. In two thousand and four, he's involved with the Vincentello Smoking Joe Pay Per Play scheme that sent Nello to prison. He was a liaison between the two. Uh, signatures all over the documents. He does not. December two thousand and four, he's arrested again for menacing, harassment, obstruction, resisting arrest arising from a nine-one-one call from a female from his home. He pleads only to harassment, so of course it's misdemeanor nothing. Now, this is the, here is the tip of the iceberg, tip of the iceberg in achievement. Uh, two thousand and six, he was the government liaison for Len Wa Chang. And payroll accountant for Lotus Spa at four four six Third Street. The FBI does a fifteen-month investigation by human, by the Human Trafficking Task Force. The place was raided in two thousand and seven. It was a brothel with human trafficked young women there, serving as the, you know, in the brothel. Quote from Gowl, I didn't see anything wrong. They had huge saunas. I met the girls, we went for drinks, I dated one of them for three months, I had a couple of massages, but no sex involved. A judge and deputy sheriff were the only ones sentenced to prison for the roles in sex slavery business that was on Third Street. Gowl was not charged. So you have that. There, he's running again.
He shouldn't even be allowed to run.
Who is he that he has, that he gets all these special passes?
Don't know. I'm sure they're all very close. Now we go to Bill Carroll. So now you, anyone can run, okay? You can't stop. Anyone can run no matter what they do. But it's up to people like Bill Carroll who'd be the president or the the um, what do you call him, chairman of a party, Republican Party, to endorse them. Because at that point, when you're endorsed, they're saying, hey, we want you to vote for him. We're the Republicans and we're telling you, this is the guy. Well, Bill Carroll does that and he himself faced twenty years in prison for the Buffalo News Call. A scam that saw customers victimized by him. He had a plea deal that kept him out of prison. And he stole, and they're they're talking millions of dollars in that.
From old people.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty much that. Yeah, yeah. So that's who you have here, making your decisions and doing your stuff. Um, and you wonder why.
He shouldn't even be allowed to run.
And you wonder why DeAngelo and those people, no one cares about nothing. I just read two thousand and six, we had a human trafficking. Young women on four, at four four six Third Street. It was a sex slavery place.
Can I ask what he was doing dating the women?
Yeah, he said it proudly. That was his vote.
What, probably like twenty-year-old women?
Right.
Maybe, maybe even less.
I've seen some there that were younger than that, very young.
Now.
But people would say that would be okay, right?
Sure, that's fine.
He's sixty and she's twenty.
Or even if he's fifty at the time, whatever, that many years ago, two thousand and six. But I mean, look at the list that I just gave you of achievements.
Yeah.
Are you gonna vote for that? Who votes for that?
Same type of people who voted for Fosso. They knew she was a criminal. They still.
Right, and you endorse them. This guy endorsed, and don't get me wrong, Democrats are no better, so don't think this is a Democrat thing. They're pieces of whatever too, because then you see what they do. They talk all kinds of junk about the mayor, but now they're shaking hands and endorsing him.
Right.
So they're no better. Uh. Who's that? I think it is, yeah. That kinda, they. Yeah, so there you go, man. Um, that's who's running. You gonna vote for him? I mean, probably. You gonna vote for that guy? He was already a councilman and had to be removed and go to prison.
Amazing they're allowing him to run.
Yeah.
You know what? It's unfortunate that people don't educate themselves on who's who, what they've done in their past. You know, like a little bit of vetting. Oh, I know him. Boom, I'll vote for him for me. Oh, I know his mother. I know his uh, boyfriend. Boom, and they.
Can I say something real quick? If it was just like he had a, please, if he just had a drinking problem, you're telling me it was a drug. Alright, I'd have, I wouldn't say this stuff. If it was like, okay, he had a drug, I get it. People do get in addictions and maybe cleaned up and that'd be great. That's a great thing to run that. Guy is involved in human trafficking and a sex la, they called it sex slavery. Well, they came in and they're the ones who broke this all up, but they only arrested two people, a judge from way out somewhere in one of those. Way out counties and some deputy sheriff. But in, but we had people here. There was a coroner who went there. There there used to be someone very popular around here. There was, yeah, there was a bunch of people. That guy's a scumbag, by the way. Great scumbag, yeah. Yeah, no, that's the thing. You're right. What the hell? These people are all around us.
Want to be extremely stupid statement, but. These people, then you look and they're in church.
They'll hand out communion. They don't mind. You know what I mean? No one cares.
So next city council election year, are we going to DeAngelo run for a seat since all them elected our sex criminals? Yeah.
Why not?
Why not? That's the first thing I thought he was probably.
He might as well.
He's allowed. I mean, he's allowed.
They let free. I mean, they let them, really. He gets, he got off almost free.
Four months he's gonna get, and I bet right now he knows the job.
Oh, yeah.
The county, he'll be somewhere in there. Don't worry, he'll be fine. Why not?
Yeah.
Yeah, why not? The closer you can get him to kids, the better. I'm sure that's what we think.
Yeah.
You know, um, because the greatest thing of all is saying, hey, was it a violent rape? You love that. That's a great thing to say.
Beautiful statement.
Yeah, what a statement that is. On yours, in two thousand and six, right here, we had human trafficking to a level called sex slavery by the federal government. And that's who you want to elect. And that's who you have as your Niagara Falls city chairman for the Republican Party. Are you, you're not. And that, but you then you connect everything together. You see why a guy gets four months for. You know, being a serial rapist in Niagara County that we've never seen before, like we've never seen.
I mean, and there was plenty of outbreak down there. People responded that I've had people that I know from all across the country. But what the hell is going on in Niagara Falls? It was bad when I left. It looks like it's a lot worse. Those are people from out of town. And it's a bit, it's embarrassing. It's how the hell are you gonna ever get people to wanna come live here?
No, you know. Yeah, because also, if you're gonna come live here, rent has skyrocketed to the point of being ridiculous. So I did another search and here we go. We're getting close to election time. So if anyone out there is listening, who's running. You better consider rent controls. All you gotta do is go take a look at Minneapolis, take a look at other parts of the state, take a look at Schenectady, take a look. They have it where you cannot raise it any more than ten percent, ten percent, and only three percent. You can raise it three percent annually. If you want, three percent, three percent, okay, stat if you want, or no more than like a one-shot ten percent. They're doing forty percent. It's gone from some places that were seven fifty to eleven hundred. And they're not doing anything about it at City Hall at all. Not one damn thing. And none of these people that are running, I'm gonna ask Uniqlo, none of them are are talking. I don't hear anyone talking about the housing crisis we have.
Right.
It's a, and then forget about the the people that are running for mayor. They don't wanna touch it because I'm assuming, well. I shouldn't say that. Well, maybe. They probably won't wanna touch it because they're gonna be, whether they're a landlord themselves or they're getting money from landlord, it's just a mess. But in the meantime, you're gonna have people that are gonna be out of homes. We know them. We've seen them. Yeah, yeah. And everyone's okay with it, man. This place is really close to being a tent city. We're real, real, real close. And the other day, I don't know if it's true, but someone posted a picture of a bit of a bus of of people coming from the south. That were dropped off here. Don't know if that's real.
Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Or Tenth Street, so they. Friend of mine, and then he goes by, so he got in his car.
Hmm.
And he drove there. He said, I saw nothing. I mean, it doesn't mean it didn't happen. They could have scooted. But there were supposedly some old dilapidated homes that were gonna move in there.
Well, isn't this the perfect spot?
If for one time, it's perfect. Niagara Falls is perfect. But didn't we supposedly block this?
The county legislator said something, but the city can still do it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
The county legislator just.
This is just begun. You wait, you wait till humans come.
Oh, yeah. No, cuz you know what I mean. The kind, it's just like they say it, but nothing, there's no real balls to it.
Yeah.
You know, and everyone applauds, hey, good, whatever. And you're not gonna do nothing. You're gonna sit there and do what you're told. If the governor wants them here, they're coming. Yeah. What's it say? Maybe this one. Oh, Jesus.
I gotta send you a picture. I will show you who she looks like. You are gonna die laughing. It looks, I mean, identical.
So. We got this election coming up. Next week, we'll have Uniqlo Lewis with us to talk about uh, why she's running and what her, what her deal is and why. She's uh, wasting her, yeah, I hate to say that, but it's almost like wasting your time because uh. Yeah, I think, oh, this is great. There's a debate, a mayoral debate. I don't know if you know, if you know the answer, don't give it out. Do you know who the moderator is?
Hmm.
You know who the moderator is? Ken Tompkins. I mean.
Another one.
Yeah.
Another one.
Why is he the moderator?
Three?
Yeah, and then you got the fourth one who's a Republican, but there's no primary. So, and that's what you got, man. So you'll have that. We'll talk more about that race as it gets closer, I guess. We might have Glenn on. I talked to him, so he can get to know the people.
You like Glenn Chalupia?
Nice guy.
Yeah.
Very nice guy, um. I tell you, I really wish these people, and they just are so scared. It's like Catholic church stuff, like they're like robots. You don't have to be a Democrat or Republican to do this. You don't have to do it because when you're a Democrat, you just bring everything with it.
Right.
Or a Republican, whatever, you bring with it, what you bring with it. And I just wish we would stop bringing those, those baggage.
Right.
Um, everyone thinks they have to. I heard someone, someone told me that you can't, yes, you can definitely win.
Yeah.
You absolutely can win as as yourself. You don't have to have them, cuz you don't need that much money here. You really don't. If you have a couple, three hundred dollars is all you'd need, I think. Get some signs, maybe get some signs, maybe not. Like, cause signs don't hold. Get on shows and.
Did nobody ever take over the Vince Nello Show, anything like that?
No.
How about fourteen, none of the old.
Just Daryl's there, that's it. Just him.
Can you get on with him or?
Oh, you can get on with him, but no one hears. Just, just George optical.
Yeah, you're right.
And Sevenson, when I was on, those are the only people that listened.
Okay.
Sabretooth's mom.
It's like the same as like listening to Tony Corrigan on his.
Well, he was on, he was on the same place.
Sam Archie Show.
But what's his name? Uh. When I, when I was on there, when I had my show on there, did I say about Sabretooth's mom?
Yes.
Yeah, Sabretooth's mother attacked me. She was so, she was furious with me.
And she introduced.
She she called in and said, I'm Sabretooth's mom. I'm like, oh shit. And then it's like, I got a problem with you. I was like, okay, well.
What, what is it?
Yeah, well, the problem was Sabretooth was at Kites for Kids on uh, at, on uh. Reservoir Park, and he was an asshole. He was a jerk. I was there. I watched him being a jerk. And I said he's a jerk on the air and then the mom called. Sabretooth's mom called. Yeah, that's Sabretooth. That's what you get over there anyways.
And then I got on the radio and and.
Yeah, yeah, she got, she wanted a break. Yeah, don't.
That's great.
Shows when I used to have her on. And she would come sit in.
People don't like when there's a serious issue and somebody stands up like Robin and you speak like that, plain. Frickin' English, they back off and they get it. Did you see on uh, Facebook? The uh, black American gentleman who found the book in the school? And it had all sorts of sexual stuff for the kids. And he read it. He was reading it to the uh. The school board and it was so bad. The stuff that he's saying was so sexual. And they got, they both, you can't do that here. And he blasts them. He says, you are offended by what I'm saying at the board?
Right.
But you're gonna let this shit get poured onto our children? He goes, but you're offended? He goes, you ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Do you guys realize sometime in June, we're having a drag show and we can ride unicorns downtown? Yeah, downtown on uh, Old Fall Street. Where, yeah, it's for children, cuz they can, the drag, drag queens plus unicorn rides. Bring your kids.
Surprised that there is one, to be honest. I I think this.
Ask the animal motorcycle gang and people like that and show them.
So, all I'm gonna say about that thing going on is, I don't know why you would bring your kids. Like, it just, I don't know why you'd go anyways, but why do you bring your kids?
Drag queen have been on the news saying. This doesn't belong anywhere near children. This, children, this is not for children.
And Dominic said, I saw that Jerry, yeah, he saw the thing. Dominic, Chi and Chetty, he saw what you were talking about.
Yeah, unbelievable hot dog. That should be shown a lot more because it's happening all over the place.
There's been a lot of uh, different videos with parents reading what they found in the school.
You have little kids.
Yeah.
You're not bringing them to ride the unicorn with the dragon. That's what I mean, just don't, if you don't want it, don't go. That's the best thing you can do, just don't.
Let it die.
Yeah.
The best thing is you let.
Just, just don't go. Cuz it's really, just take care, I hate to say this, but in this situation, just take care of your own.
Right.
Keep them home and don't do it. That's all. Cuz why would you bring your little ones to that if you don't want that?
Right.
So just keep them home.
Good friend of mine, when a lot of the shit started happening years ago, other things in education, and we were at meetings about tolerance. Right? And he stood up and he said, I think it's time we start talking about intolerance. We don't tolerate this kind of stuff and and people were like, half of the people turned around and went.
You know what? I I personally, like, I've been to Rachel, I loved Rachel, but I would never bring my kids to it. No. Why would you? It's for adults.
Adults.
Yeah.
There's no going. You wanna do that stuff? You don't bring that stuff around.
No, and it's weird that, and then when you read the pamphlet, I'm like, oh my god, they really.
Perverted stuff, let's face it. We don't want perverts around kids. That's how I feel.
Yeah, those are things like you don't want, I don't wanna see anything. Like, I don't want any guys.
Your little kids to an R-rated movie that had too much sex in it. Why would you take?
Keep the adult stuff for adults. I have no problem with it at all. You wanna be whoever you wanna be, God bless you, but don't go pouring it. I appreciate kids, these little kids.
The experience for the adults too, when you have kids involved in adult things.
They're bringing their kids though. That's the weird thing here.
But it makes normal adults uncomfortable. If I'm at a drag show, I'd be great with that. I'd have a lot of fun. If I see little kids running around, now I'm, now I'm not comfortable and I don't like it.
Have you been to one?
Um, not a full-out one, but I will.
Full out? What's half?
I've seen people in.
Oh, dressed up? Just, but it wasn't an actual show? It was just uh, some fun?
Yeah.
No, it's just some, it's just some fun. And you went to a real one?
Oh, yeah. I went to Martella. The drag show and everything. They have a little midget one too.
I never been there.
But I've never brought my kids.
Yeah, could you, what the hell?
Alright, we gotta go. It's already seven o'clock. Stacy was great. Let's remember, hold on, we got some comments here. Let me see. Yeah, you wouldn't take your kid to a strip club, right? Yeah, you're not gonna, yeah, you're not gonna bring your young boy to the strip club to see your women strip. Yeah, it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what their sexual orientation is. Alright, let's see. Alright, so what do we got? I wanna remind everyone about Stacey. I got her picture here. So, there it is. It is called How to Fight CPS and Win, the New York Edition. Every Tuesday at four thirty Eastern, we will share it. I've shared every show on Citizens United. So I'll keep sharing it. And like you said, just because you miss it at four thirty, you can watch it at four thirty the next day. Old, all the old shows are there, just like we ours too. I saw, I saw an old show that you guys brought up the other day, almost ten thousand views. That was the old one with Masser.
Yeah. Look it up.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, his wife is a judge at six.
And I sent that everywhere. I sent that show to inside, every edition, Inside Edition, Oprah, everyone got that. And they don't give a fuck. They didn't say a word. And it just tells you cuz they don't wanna say a word. I got brought, oh, Dominic, I got brought to one. Even just for adults, I was terrified. I wish I could have, could be invisible. Uh, so can't even imagine bringing your child to that. I wouldn't even allow my kids to watch adults swim. I remember that, uh, when they were little.
Yeah, no, right. You wouldn't even let them watch. You're not gonna watch cinema.
Like the commercials, RuPaul and stuff like.
Oh, see, I watch, I watch that.
Yeah, but no, I mean, I don't like it exposed to the kids.
Right.
And later.
Why would we do that?
I mean, to have little ones, little kids, I mean, I don't know what you're thinking. I think you're to the, the right age where they're gonna bring them. I would imagine, what's it say?
No, they're not strippers, but a lot of the times they're wearing inappropriate stuff. Like strippers would. I mean, I don't know if you've seen it, but I've seen it plenty of times where they're dressed very inappropriate, right? Something for children not to watch or not to see.
And they're act, they act. Dance, the way that.
Adult situation.
Bring a stripper to school. Is that what's next?
Or or even just act sexual, or just even, even if they didn't take off their, you know, just the.
Right.
You know, the, or the hypersexual, whatever, just keep to the, to the.
Let kids be kids.
Started years ago with girls coming in. We used to get people mad. Why can't my daughter win? I go, wait, that's kind of a dress code. I said, you're thinking about uniforms. Maybe everybody had uniforms. I go, be lucky that we're just telling you it's a, that.
Right.
We had a hard time doing that, a very hard time. The publics wish you were watching a lot of this stuff. But nobody, nobody, I could even, Phantom would want that.
It's just weird. It's not weird as far as anything other than having your kids. Like, I guess I, that's kinda what I wanna say.
Of Michigan. The woman was on Facebook too. She was, we should have one in every classroom. That's out there. It's being pushed, not here maybe, but it's. So now you're getting a backlash from people.
It should be if, if, no.
Cause it's bad enough, all the kids, we know that get sexually assaulted. Yeah, let's just let them.
Yeah.
Don't let, let them keep their innocence.
And then actually have a childhood.
Yeah, saying that we. I enjoy it. I love it. I think it's.
Yeah, that's all we're saying. It's all we're saying. You go have fun and dress up. Go ahead, go ahead. It's, I mean, it's absolutely zero to me. I want you to have fun, go ahead, but don't bring it here. I would walk into my classroom and start smoking a cigarette.
We don't have phone call, we don't have Collins. Sorry about that, buddy, but we don't, we don't have. Maybe someday with enough stars, come in. Alright, we gotta go. I gotta, I got another thing to do. Hey, did I tell you?
Yeah.
I'm getting to do something. I'm never a guest.
Oh, you're a guest?
Yeah, tonight, yeah. Um, tonight, NHL with full press hockey, NHL full press hockey. Really? I get to be a guest tonight, yeah. So I get to talk about Maple Leafs tonight. I'll probably cry, but what are you gonna do? Alright, let's get on. Yeah, I have to go in the corner because the pops. It's like Cheech and Chong. This is, this is a different, this is a different style of smoke. Yeah, pain relief smoke. No, no, no. Alright, we're gonna go. We gotta, we don't have time for nothing. Let's see, I see a drag show every time that rapist lawyer's sister, oh. Allegedly, but he is butt grit. Butt grit, hashtag butt grit.
Is it, is it appropriate, Nick DeAngelo, to be dressing up in lingerie and exposing himself?
Better than that goofy purple suit he wears.
Um, purple shoes. Alright, we're gonna go. Next week, we're gonna have, our old friend Vernon will be on with us. And then we're gonna have Uniqlo Lewis, who is running for city council, gonna talk to her about what she's doing. We're gonna go. We gotta go.
Yep.
We're going. Alright, everyone, take it easy. We'll see you next week. Share our show. Keep an eye out for um, Stacy's too. Oh no, he's gonna vomit.
Sorry, Dominic, sorry.
I gotta find the, the music, we can go. Alright, see you guys next week.